Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is June 25, 2024. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. I'd like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator Mike Supperly. Mike, thank you for all your assistance as well. Mrs. Hall has an excused absence this evening. Before we go on to approval of the minutes, I'd just like to comment. It's great to see a full house here tonight. We have some of our favorite people in the city here with us tonight. We're going to be recognizing them in a few minutes. Mrs. Fisher, could I call upon you for a motion to approve the minutes?
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the council and workshop minutes for June the 11th. I do find them in order, so I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. Okay. Our first presentation this evening is for the Fire Department swearing-in ceremony. This is always a great time as we have new people joining us in our fire department, which is one of our most important services here in the community. We have a number of new people. We also have several promotions. So with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Chief Robbins, Mitch Robbins, to do the swearing-in. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Laner. Council, welcome to the Kettering Fire Department penning ceremony. Tonight, we would like to recognize several promotions and new hires with the official penning of the badges. The greatest symbol of our unfettered access to the public trust is the badge. It is critical that we keep that trust sacred. If I could have Assistant Chief Brian Beaver, Carolina, Jake, come to the front, please. Chief Beaver has been promoted to the rank of Assistant Chief of Operations. Brian has served the citizens of Kettering for 25 years and came to the Kettering Fire Department from the Dayton Fire Department. I will now read his oath of office, and we'll pin the badge. I promised I would keep it short, and I am going to do it. I state your name.
I, Brian Beaver.
Raise your right hand, sorry. I state your name.
I, Brian Beaver.
Pledge to faithfully serve the citizens of Kettering.
Pledge to faithfully serve the citizens of Kettering.
As an Assistant Fire Chief.
As an Assistant Fire Chief.
For the city of Kettering.
For the city of Kettering.
And duly execute the responsibilities.
And duly execute the responsibilities.
Entrusted to me.
Entrusted to me.
I will supervise and help lead.
I will supervise and help lead.
The Kettering Fire Department and support the management.
The Kettering Fire Department and support the management.
Of the city of Kettering.
Of the city of Kettering.
I will properly exercise the authority.
I will properly exercise the authority.
Granted to me.
Granted to me.
Loyally uphold all governing laws.
Loyally uphold all governing laws.
Regulations and directives.
Regulations and directives.
And honorably perform my duties.
And honorably perform my duties.
And the best tradition of the American fire service.
And the best tradition of the American fire service.
Nailed it. Congratulations. You can stab him if you want. If I could have Battalion Chief Brett Davenport, Molly, Traceon, and Taylor come to the front, Chief Davenport has been promoted to the rank of Battalion Chief and has served the citizens of Kettering for 12 years. Coming to us from Kettering to Kettering, Brett served the citizens of Zhenia, and I will now read the oath of office for Battalion Chief. You want it short and choppy, too? Okay. I state your name.
I, Brett Davenport.
Pledge to faithfully serve.
Pledge to faithfully serve.
The citizens of Kettering as a Battalion Chief.
The citizens of Kettering as a Battalion Chief.
For the Kettering Fire Department.
For the Kettering Fire Department.
And duly execute the responsibilities.
And duly execute the responsibilities.
Entrusted to me.
Entrusted to me.
I will supervise and lead my fellow firefighters.
I will supervise and lead my fellow firefighters.
And support the command staff of the city of Kettering.
And support the command staff of the city of Kettering.
I will properly exercise the authority.
I will properly exercise the authority.
Granted to me.
Granted to me.
Loyally uphold all governing laws.
Loyally uphold all governing laws.
Regulations and directives.
Regulations and directives.
And honorably perform my duties.
And honorably perform my duties.
And the best tradition of the American fire service.
And the best tradition of the American fire service.
Congratulations. Thank you. If I could now have Captain Kent Dunlinger, Captain A.J. Bacon, and Captain Ryan McClure and their family come to the front. Captain Kent Dunlinger came to the Kettering Fire Department from the Dayton Fire Department and served the citizens of Kettering prior both as a volunteer firefighter and a part-time firefighter. Captain A.J. Bacon came to the Kettering Fire Department from the Dayton Fire Department. Captain Ryan McClure has prior service at the Middletown Fire Department. Kent, A.J., and Ryan have been promoted to the rank of captain, and I will now administer the oath of office for captain. Raise your right hand. I got to find it. Okay. Short and choppy? Okay.
Your Honor.
I state your name.
I, A.J. Bacon.
Pledge to faithfully serve the citizens of Kettering.
Pledge to faithfully serve the citizens of Kettering.
As a fire department officer.
Fire department officer.
And duly execute the responsibilities entrusted to me.
And duly execute the responsibilities entrusted to me.
That was a little long. I apologize.
I will supervise and lead my fellow firefighters.
I will supervise and lead my fellow firefighters.
And support the command staff of the city of Kettering.
Support the command staff of the city of Kettering.
I will properly exercise the authority granted to me.
I will properly exercise the authority granted to me.
Nailed it. Lloyally uphold all governing laws.
Lloyally uphold all governing laws.
Regulations and directives.
Regulations and directives.
And perform, or, and honorably perform my duties.
And honorably perform my duties.
And the best tradition of the American fire service.
And the best tradition of the American fire service.
Now, pin the badges. If I could have firefighter paramedic Josh Mumpower, Justin Poppy, Danielle Walter, and Dakota Megan, please come to the front with your family member or special guest. Josh has prior experience at the Dayton Fire Department, and Josh, and Justin comes to us from Liberty Township Fire Department. Danny is from Huber Heights Fire Department, and Dakota is from Zhenia Fire Department. Unable to attend tonight is firefighter paramedic Matt Ray from Springfield Fire Department, Brandon Boykin from Washington Township Fire Department, Scott Burrows from Zhenia Fire Department, and John Stanker from Dayton Fire Department. I will now read the oath of office for firefighter paramedic.
Raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Mr. Hoppy.
Pledge to faithfully serve the citizens of Kettering.
Pledge to faithfully serve the citizens of Kettering.
And duly execute the responsibilities.
And duly execute the responsibilities.
Entrusted to me.
Entrusted to me.
I will properly exercise the authority granted to me.
I will properly exercise the authority granted to me.
Lloyally uphold all governing laws.
Lloyally uphold all governing laws.
Regulations and directives.
Regulations and directives.
And honorably perform my duties.
And honorably perform my duties.
And the best tradition of the American fire service.
And the best tradition of the American fire service.
And now, pin the badge.
Chief, you know you got a fifth one that swore in you. Good job.
For her.
Yay, good job, buddy.
I'm going to make it quick to finish, and we're going to come down and take one group photo, and then we're going to get out of everybody's hair. I would like to extend our congratulations to our recently promoted members and our new hires. Welcome to the Kettering Fire Department family. I would like to acknowledge all of the support from Jenny Smith and Amanda Harold and their human resources staff throughout our hiring and promotion process. I would also like to thank Mayor Laner, City Council, and City Administration for their unwavering support of your fire department. This concludes the ceremony. Thank you.
And then, go party.
But be real quiet as you leave.
Thank you.
Here, you come over, and you're walking back, so it's going to get outside.
For Utah.
Right.
For Utah.
So, thank you all very much. We hope we don't see you anywhere but the community block party.
That's right. That's right.
I think I've ever seen them do that before.
We've not done the fire department. I don't want to be in the fire department. I like it in the chambers. Oh, it's our librarian. Mike's here. Hi, Mike. We hope you have something big and important to speak to today.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are the fridge. These are one of my fridge.
Okay. We have no public hearings this evening. This is the point in the agenda, however, that anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the agenda, the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight about any of the legislation? Okay, seeing none, we will move along. We have no ordinances in second reading this evening. I'd like to call on Mrs. Fisher for the first resolution.
Your Honor, I do have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the renovation of the playground surfacing. The cost and budget are both $197,000, requested by Parks, Recreation, Culture Arts, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Mr. Greason, do you have any comments?
Yes, Your Honor. This project consists of renovation replacement of safety surfacing within playgrounds, and specifically, in 2024, Oak Park, Winsler Park, and State Farm Park playgrounds are planned for a complete resurfacing. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution 10990-24 regarding equipment purchases. The estimated costs and the funds available are $104,000. This is requested by the Public Service Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. The quoted amount for the purchase of a flatbed truck cab and chassis and the equipment that we outfit that cab and chassis with totals $103,477, and that exceeds the budgeted amount of $80,000. So anytime our quotes exceed the 25% threshold above the budgeted amount, we need your approval. And the cab and the chassis, I would note, have already been purchased, but council action is needed prior to approval of the outfit, which is more expensive than we anticipated. We are going to offset this additional cost this year by not purchasing a joint sealer, which was budgeted for $60,000, and we'll use some of the funds available to cover the, cover the overage. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We have any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for development of a future land use plan. Estimated cost is $150,000. Is requested by Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. One of the critical responsibilities of a city government is to plan for the future of the city, and in particular, how that city may, our city, will develop through land use. We are recommending that you authorize us to move forward with a request for proposal for consultant services to enter into an agreement to develop a future land use plan for the city of Kettering. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. I would just like to make the comment, there's been a lot of discussion about a comprehensive plan. We did not feel that was descriptive enough language, since this just applies to zoning and planning and development.
Right. Our zoning code actually calls it the comprehensive plan, but yes, it relates to land use and all the things that are interrelated to that, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that in an effort to be more descriptive, we didn't end up being more confusing, so.
Well, we may have.
Yeah.
But, but yes, it's an important task. Our land use planning, our comprehensive plan, as it was called at the time, was last updated over 20 years ago, and our strategic plan recently adopted recommends that we take a close look at this as we move into the future.
Thank you. With that said, we'll call the roll. Any questions first?
I have a comment. We discussed this at workshop. I would still like to see some additional effort by staff for this to maybe reduce the amount of money required for this endeavor, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
No.
Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024. The amount budgeted is $301,900, and this is requested by the Finance Department. I move for approval.
Second. Sorry, sorry.
You can do it. I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. So, we have a couple supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures. First is a supplemental appropriation of $259,100 for a 1.25% retroactive pay increase for non-organized full-time and regular part-time employees. As you'll recall, their 2024 budget included a 2.25% across-the-board increase for non-union employees, and on June 11th, so just a short time ago, the mayor and council authorized a retroactive pay increase of 2.25 to 3.5 effective December 18, 2023. So general fund transfers are requested for that retroactive pay increase, as well as in the Street Maintenance Fund, Police Pension Fund, and the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Funds. That's the big one. Any questions?
I'm not having.
Okay, the second is a smaller supplemental appropriation, personal services in the Human Resources Department and volunteer services area. $42,800 is requested for personal services in Human Resources, and $15,800 in volunteer. And this is to update the budget to reflect what's actually happening. In the Human Resources Department, it's related to insurance selection, so employees that, whose insurance selection is more costly than was budgeted. And then we had a change in personnel where the pay rate is higher than what was previously budgeted in volunteer. Be glad to answer any questions about that if you have them.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Okay. That concludes our resolutions for this evening. We will now move on to ordinances and first reading, of which we have none. Certifications and petitions. Mrs. Haislip, do we have any this evening?
Your Honor, there are no certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. We will then move to managers' report and community update.
Yes, Your Honor. I first want to welcome Brian Chodowski, Chodkowski, I'm going to pronounce it many times. Brian joins us as one of our new assistant city managers coming from Huber Heights with a long and distinguished career in local government, and we're glad to have him on the team. Welcome, Brian. Want to highlight our Neighborhood Pride Awards. Encourage people to take a moment to nominate a neighbor, a business, or themselves, or any Kettering resident you think is deserving of a Neighborhood Pride Award. The information on how you can do that is on your screen, and it's also in your summer edition of Contact with Kettering. The deadline is August 1st to make a nomination. We, we heard a presentation from our fire department earlier tonight, and one of the things that happens is they sometimes get the chance to attend block parties, and we encourage our neighbors to hold block parties. It's a great way to get together with your neighbors and build a sense of community. Police Department and Fire Department representatives, if available and not on calls, always love the chance to stop by and say hello. If you're interested in doing a block party, the information is on the screen for who you can contact in our engineering department to do that. So tomorrow night is Spasnak. Our Sister Cities Organization hosts a wonderful event Wednesday, June 26, 5:30 to 9:30 at the Fraz Pavilion. Free admission, and it's a wonderful summertime tradition. We encourage everyone to come. There is free lunch. This is a kind of one of the stalwart Kettering programs that has gone on for many summers. There's a free summer food program. Lunch is available to all children's 0 through 18th, June 3rd through August 9th, noon to 2 p.m. This is Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at the Trails of Oak Creek, and the other days, Tuesday and Thursday, at Van Buren Park Shelter. We certainly encourage anybody who is interested in participating and attending. One of my favorite events of the year is the Fourth of July fireworks. So Go4reimagined is taking part, obviously, on July 4th, as it always does, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Delco Park. Kettering's first drone show, more fireworks, an increased number of bounce houses and food trucks, entertainment with roaming performers, and this year, a DJ that will be projected throughout the park so everyone can hear the music. We're looking forward to Go4re and hope everyone can make it. We're also calling on all volunteers to join us in helping clean up after Go4re. I actually, I prefer that nobody drop any trash during Go4re.
Amen.
However, since people do, we need volunteers to clean up the park 8 a.m. July 5th, the night after Go4re, and we also appreciate all the volunteers that have done that in years past. We are pleased to report that Adventure Reef has extended hours, longer hours than last year, and that is because we've been able to hire more lifeguards. So kudos to our Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department and our Human Resources Department for their efforts to recruit talented young people that are serving as lifeguards at Adventure Reef. We're now open till 7 p.m. on weekdays, Monday through Saturday, noon to 7:00, Sunday, noon to 6:00. It's a wonderful asset in our community. We encourage everyone to take advantage of it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Greason.
Could I make one comment? One of our groups from Kettering Leadership Academy this past year instituted, their project was to put a little reading library at Greenmont Elementary, which is available to all kids during the summer lunch program. Kids can come in and take a book. We'd like them to return it, but they don't have to. So I just want to encourage everyone, all the kids, to go over to Greenmont, grab a book. There's books from baby to, I think, youth, I don't know. Anyway, just wanted to throw that in.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to council, they may do so at this time. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before city council this evening? Nothing from the library, huh? That's all right. We do have a library levy coming up. I will just throw that out there, and we hope that everyone will support that. Libraries are critically important to our communities, so. We will move on to council reports, and Mrs. Fisher, would you like to start?
It's been a busy couple of weeks. I will cover a few things. On the 20th of June, Mr. Sullivan and I did the ribbon cutting for Wise Way Supply. They've expanded from a just electrical to plumbing and electrical, so I was very excited because my sister got to buy a dryer plug while we were there. It was awesome. And speaking of Adventure Reef, I happened to be there today when the rain came up. And wow, those lifeguards are on it because heard the thunder, and we all evacuated like right now. So top-notch kids. So top-notch kids, sorry, but they're kids, top-notch kids working at our Adventure Reef. And I did stop by the library today, and we had to renew some books with my grandson. So another great place to visit, and Lisa is correct. So just for clarity, there is food also, free food at Greenmont every single day, Monday through Friday, in addition to the two locations that Mr. Greason talked about. So we do have quite a few offerings for those kids to get free lunches over the summer. Oh, one more thing. I was supposed to do a community bike ride on Sunday, but due to the rain, it was canceled. So I encourage folks that if you like to ride a bike, and I haven't ridden one in 40 years, and I'm gonna do it, to sign up to ride a bike through our Parks and Rec. That's all I have.
All right. We also went to the Bigsby Coffee ribbon cutting. Forgot about that. But I just wanted to welcome Brian to the city of Kettering. Excited to work with you. And I just wanted to comment on the fire department, the ceremony they put on. That was amazing, seeing all the families and all the support, and a good reminder of, you know, they have families, the men and women that go into a burning building, so we appreciate them. We are having our, my streets block party this weekend, and it has become, this is our third year of doing it, and it is, all the neighbors now know each other. We talk a lot more, and so I encourage neighborhoods to do that. Host a block party. It's a lot of fun. And then the last thing I'll say is on the 23rd, Sixa celebrated its 50th anniversary, which Sixa is not Kettering anymore, but most of those 50 years were in Kettering. They still own a property in Kettering, so we hope that they'll maybe keep doing business in Kettering. That's possible. But Sixa does still partner with Kettering and works with Kettering. They support the Community Cats and the TNR program, which is the Trap, Neuter, and Return program. I got to dress up as Scooter, the neutered cat. Yeah, it was great. I didn't know before I got there. I was voluntold. If you've seen the commercials, I won't sing the jingle and all that, but I, it's too, Scooter, the neutered cat is, promotes spang and neutering efforts, and I'm sure because we have a lot of cats in the community, that's an important thing. So I did not bring pictures of me dressed up, but that's it for me.
On that one, Tom. Come on, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for taking one for the team as the neutered cat. That's quite impressive. And I'll add one real quick comment to Sixa. That's where the dogs in the Scott household come from. That organization does a great, great job. I want to welcome Brian to the city staff. I think you have a wonderful career here in Kettering. I also want to comment on the firefighters. We should never take those people for granted. And as I told Chief Robbins, I think he's got a great team. Unfortunately, I never want to see either, any of them at my house. And as the Go Fourth is coming up, that's a great event, and we've got a long weekend for many people. It's a four-day weekend. Lot of stores, shops, restaurants in Kettering to shop. That's it for me.
I want to echo everyone else, and welcome Brian. Happy to have you here. It's odd to look over and not see Amy Shrimp sitting there, but we'll get used to it. Couple of committee updates. MVCC, we were notified of the retirement of the executive director, his upcoming retirement. Jay, I cannot say his name to save my life. Weiss-Curture. It looks like that'll be sometime in 2025, but he will definitely be missed. He's been such a great leader over there. From KLA, starting tomorrow, we're starting to interview for this year's Kettering Leadership Academy, and I'm very, very excited about that. I can't wait. And I was going to say that the star of the week was the Juneteenth Festival, because it was amazing, absolutely amazing. I was so happy to be there, and it was perfect. But I think Scooter, the neutered cat, might be the new star of the week. So that's all I have.
So speaking of Juneteenth, this is the third year that the Board of Community Relations has led that charge, and I, by all accounts, from my short time there that evening, it's grown in success by both foot traffic, people attending as well as just the partners from the community and organizations, and even the local businesses and vendors that came out. So, and they hit the lottery on the weather that night. It was just perfect. BCR's been busy. Just 10 days prior, they participated in the Kettering Pride Event at Delco, and it's sort of inaugural year, and BCR has just continued to look to the rest of the year. It was a busy stretch with the block party, Pride, and then the Juneteenth. And that committee's just very busy, so it's been impressive to be a part of that group and watch the work that they've done. For me, I don't know. I feel like I've been busy, but like I was at the Ohio Municipal League Regional Meeting last week doing some learning and digging into some things I'm not familiar with, and just an opportunity just to sit with other members of council and city leaderships from around mostly southern Ohio, learning. And I missed the canoe trip with Lisa and Jackie with the Little Miami River Conservancy Group. But yeah, summer's here, and look forward to Go Fourth.
Thank you very much. I don't have a whole lot to add tonight. I'd like to add to the welcome to Brian. Should have mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting. Apologize. But we are delighted to have you. It shows there's a lot going on, and we look forward to your expertise. I hope to see you all at the Go Fourth celebration. This is the first year since I've been mayor that I wasn't on family vacation for the Fourth of July. So they're changing the whole events to keep me off the stage. So, no, not really. But the, the format is changing somewhat, particularly with the drones, and it should be a lot of fun and exciting. And I marked down that we have that cleanup the next day, and hadn't heard about that before, but I bet that's a lot of fun. So, and I understand the city manager's bringing donuts for everyone who comes, so. He didn't know it either, but, no, you don't have to do that. Anyway, thanks, everyone, for tuning in tonight out there in the public, and thanks to council members for all your hard work. And that concludes our, our meeting for this evening, and our next council meeting will be, it's always on the next page, July 9th, 2024. This meeting is adjourned.